There you go.
Good evening. Today is Monday, June twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. It's five thirty P M. Tonight's agenda, item agenda A, city updates by Brian McCain, chief of staff, five minute presentation.
Thank you, sir. City boards and commissions. We are now accepting applications for the following boards. Pueblo Depot Activity Development Authority Board of Directors. The deadline is six thirty at eight A M. And the Pueblo Homeless Commission deadline is seven, seven at eight A M. Pueblo Parks and Rec. Join us as a volunteer at the Steel City Arkansas River Festival on July twenty sixth. It's a great way to give back and enjoy a day by the river. Scan the Q R code up on the screen when Clyde gets that up. Or visit us at pueblo.us slash scarf, S C A R F. You can see it up there. There's also info on the city of Pueblo and Pueblo Parks and Rec social media pages for additional details. Bike to Work Day and Bike From Work Day. Bike to Work Day is Wednesday, June twenty fifth. There's a breakfast stop at the S R D A across the street. It's two thirty North Union Avenue. Grab a coffee, burritos, and other things at the pit stop from six thirty to eight thirty A M. Then join Bike From Work Day at Walters from four to six P M. For a buy one, get one free at one twenty six O'Nidas Street. Pueblo Transit is pleased to announce an update to our north shopping route effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. North Shopping will operate from eleven forty five A M. Until five forty five P M. This change is designed to better serve our customers by providing more convenient travel options during peak hours. We believe that these adjusted times will enhance accessibility and improve overall service. And that concludes my updates.
Okay, any comments, questions from council? Also Flores?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, uh, let's move on. Item Agenda B, Pure twenty fifty downtime revitalization plan. Jerry and Pacheco, Executive Director, Dr. Jim Valenzuela, Pure Chairman. Jeanette Garcia, Pure Vice Chairman, and Crystal Luca, Pure Treasurer. It has it down for fifteen minute presentation, so we, if we can try to keep close to that, we'll be able to ask some questions. You can may ask some questions and comments from council. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We ready? Good evening, members of city council, meta mayor, staff. Uh, this evening, we were asked to give an update to a project we've been working on for several years now. In the two thousand and twenty five pure budget that was approved last year, the board authorized hiring a consultant team to begin an update on the planning documents with respect to our downtown. The last time that the downtown had a pretty thorough exhaustive process for downtown implement downtown redevelopment strategy that it was all on the ninety four plan. And so what we've been working on is doing all the background research and getting modern interpretations from our consultants on best practices about how to attract businesses to our core of our community. Um, how to address the Front Range Rail Project if and when that ever comes. How do we set ourselves up for success? And with our downtown, um, it's no secret that if you go, I mean, for the first time I in my time here at the city, I saw graffiti on on the Thatcher Building. I thought that would, that was just shocking to me. So I, I think, um, we all just need to start revisiting our downtown, putting some focus back on our town downtown and and I'm going to talk about that here in a second. This packet that I provided you, uh, I just got the graphics this morning from our consultant. We were not prepared to do a full thing yet because this is still all draft. This is all still work product by staff and the consultants, but I, I just want to go through this real quick. So you have it. This is the Urban Renewal Authority's mission, create, protect, enhance. If you are familiar with the old, I don't know if it's still the motto for the planning department, but it used to be preserve and enhance Pablo's unique quality of life. And so this is uh, builds upon that work that we did way back when with the city's planning department. So our mission is we're trying to create dynamic change, change for the better, not change for the sake of just changing things. Trying to position ourselves as a community to attract out of town investment. Change for the better. The second bullet point, protect and retain. Pablo has a lot, Pablo has really good bones. And what I mean by bones is our infrastructure system. It can support a population much larger than what we have. And as part of some of this work that we're doing, we're, we're analyzing the capacity of our infrastructure in our downtown to show that you could actually push quite a bit of investment in our community at a minimal cost when you're talking about large commercial buildings, large commercial enterprises, mass transit, things like that. And as part of that is is reaffirming that our central business district is in fact the core of our community. And what I mean by community is the entire, really, the county, the heart and soul of Pueblo. The namesake of this county in this city is our central business district. And so how do we? How do we support that? And if that is not what we want to do, if you want to explore doing things like the Denver Tech Center or Interlochen and all the places in the Denver metro area. They have the central business district and they have two other uh districts. For us, I think our recommendation is we need to refocus back on on downtown and we're trying to provide some supplemental support and um and movement to to get us to that point. Uh, third of these five bullet points, we support the community's new job efforts. We only get involved in economic development, primary job projects at the request of the city and its P E D Co. They always take the lead. We follow. Um, we are just a financing tool for the community's job creation efforts. We get more involved in the commercial multifamily neighborhood revitalization stuff than we do on the primary job, but we are a tool that the community can use for those, for those activities. Inform, educate, and communicate. Commissioner, our commissioners, uh, led by our, our vice chair, Jeanette Garcia. We've scheduled community tours through our project areas where we show some of the projects that we've undertaken and some projects that we're considering moving forward. And that has been very helpful for us to get feedback. There's, for example, the, the head of the school board as part of our trip through the Lower East Side, when we're showing the two duplexes that we made, that we built. Uh, she was able to see firsthand into some of these neighborhoods, what's going on in terms of the blight. The rundown houses, the burnt out houses, trash, all of those things. And you know, the average citizen doesn't drive into some of these neighborhoods on a normal basis. So shining a light on some of these concerns that we have uh, has been important in some of the work that we do. And then again, um, Pablo has had a, a, a culture of silos and governance. We're trying to break those down, particularly as a mission to comply with the changes to the urban renewal statute that happened in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, when the statute was changed, it changed the, the makeup and the dynamic of how urban renewals in Colorado work. For the first time, we had to go, we had to meet, confer, negotiate, and discuss TIF sharing amongst all the, the other taxing bodies. Prior to that, those taxing bodies did not have legal standing. It was solely a decision of the city. So prior to two thousand and fifteen, it was a sole decision of the city with, with a meet and confer with the county commissioners. Now it's the city wants to do an urban renewal district. We have to meet with all of the different multiple taxing bodies and arrive at a negotiated settlement. So those are fun. It's fundamentally changed how we handle economic development. In your packet, you also, you should have this graphic called the TIF split. And the reason why this graphic is important is it shows that the lar, the two largest contributors to the property tax increment as part of this program is Pueblo County and School District sixty. With respect to those portions of the community, they're in School District seventy. I would just submit seventy's name instead of sixty. For all practical purposes, it's roughly the same. The school district has their general purpose mill levy, property tax mill levy, and then they have their bond redemption, school construction mill levy. So that's why the school district has two. The general mill levy based on school attendance sometimes gets backfilled from the state. Whereas the bond redemption, the, the money that they use to pay off the debt that they issue for construction of new schools. Um, that, that's, you know, what, I'm sorry. The purple. Yes, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. All right, now let's get into the meat of this discussion. Your staff, us, HARP, a lot of other folks have been operating under the nineteen ninety five framework plan. And in that framework plan that was prepared, uh, Jim Munch was planning director at the time. Worked with our community leaders for many years to arrive at this framework plan. What this framework plan did is it laid the foundation for the establishment of the convention center. Um, Headwaters Fountain, some other improvements at the Art Center, our business district. You could see from this little graphic um, some of these projects. And so what we challenged our consultants to do was taking this plan. So that's, this is the ninety four plan downtown and reimagining it to our modern situation. Okay, there are projects that are as part of the ninety four plan that have been completed. Some were not. For example, there was discussion of a sin, a signature city project at the corner of Second and Main Street. That didn't happen. Okay, but that doesn't mean that that couldn't be revisited, or if the community wants a signature project down there, maybe we just move locations. So before we, this is all draft. But I just wanted to take this time to show that it, we're being, we're trying to be as thoughtful and as methodical as we can be. Our lead consultant is Kathleen Fulger from Tribal Architects. She has an undergraduate degree from USC California in architecture and a master's degree in architecture and urban planning from M I T. And this lady and her team do tremendous work in the Denver metro area. They're very familiar with the financing principles and obstacles for development in Colorado. And so they're guiding us and advising us on what they're seeing in the market, where, what they're experiencing. To try to, you know, revisit our downtown and try to promote more, more construction and more investment in our downtown. Um, this last page just shows the existing urban structure that we have downtown and, you know, in our core. And with that, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Now some flowers.
You know, uh, when I first got on city council, the uh county had a ballot issue that was supposedly going to re-landscape Union Avenue. What happened that that never occurred? And I, I thought the voters voted for that. And uh nothing's really changed in the last, uh, since that election and.
I, I think a good portion of, of some of the monies went into some planning activities. Uh, when you, when you talk about, for example, this preliminary work on our part is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar endeavor. And this is the first phase of a multi-phase project. This is all the data gathering information now. So it, it could have been, and I can't speak to it because your public works department would know better than I do, but I thought the county gave the city money to plan those improvements. And once they came up with the plan, the costs were too much to undertake the project, but the city would have to speak for them.
We have two, what I call albatross buildings down in that area, the, the Pope Block Building and the Colorado Building. What, what can, what can a city like ours do with two buildings like that? Uh, to make them a part of this plan and make them usable. Uh, it always seems to be parking. That's the, the big issue. Uh, right. But like the Pope Block, uh, if parking was the issue, you think you could use the first floor for parking and then maybe go up from there. But what, what?
I went into, yeah, I, in meeting with our consultants, when we did the you know, we, some of us have actually been working on this since two thousand and five, you know, uh, been around that long. But um the parking has been severed from most of the major buildings down there. And even if the city were to forgive all parking requirements, what we've learned in the, in the business community is the, the financiers will not finance these project unless they can have specifically a specific number of dedicated parking spaces. Everybody that we've been working with, and that's been the problem with the, with the federal building, the Colorado building, and a lot of the other privately held buildings on Santa Fe, Maine, and some of the others, they just don't physically have the parking. And so, um, when you're trying to get commercial financing, it's, it's extremely difficult. And no one wants to land on a, let's take it, for example, the Colorado building. Let's say it costs thirty million to build it, to do the renovation work. Still isn't, that doesn't include any parking. So why would a bank want to undertake that risk? Because it's been a practical difficulty. So the only good thing is at the northeast corner, uh, I'm sorry, the southeast corner of Fourth and Main and the southeast corner of Fifth and Main are parking lots that could be the site of a future parking structure downtown. That as part of when we're looking at these strategies, um, our consultant actually kind of changed my opinion on, you know, should we be pushing a parking garage first? And what they're analyzing now is can we reconfigure some alley improvements and some streetscape improvements to add more parking capacity in our downtown streets? For example, we have three and four lane streets. You know, one way in certain parts of downtown, we don't need that capacity. You know, that's the capacity that you have in downtown Denver by Laramore Square, you know? Um, and they, we don't have that kind of density. So could you could you bridge your parking situation in the short term to start getting some investment in downtown? And then when it reaches that critical mass standpoint, we undertake a large parking structure program for down there.
Yeah. And then my last, my last is really an ask of you, and that is I'm of, often amazed how many people in our community do not know how urban renewal operates, where we get money to be able to reinvest in our community. Could, could you just spend two or three minutes just indicating uh to our citizens as to where the money comes from? Uh, that it's not from, you know, sales tax.
No.
And, 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 uh, and where we get this money? How it's restricted just to certain TIF areas, uh, the majority of the time. And I think that would be very beneficial.
So the way we operate, the originally urban renewals were set up as a grant receiving entity. There's a lot of the federal programs that were implemented, approved in the forties and fifties. A lot of them flowed through the creation of Urban Renewal Authorities across the country. And then the, in Colorado, we added this property tax increment provision to urban renewal whereby for a period of twenty five years, whatever incremental tax growth is in that area, it's captured and allocated to the Urban Renewal Authority for improvements in, in that particular area. There are two general approaches that we take. One is, um, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You're not going to have tax increment unless you have development. But you need to have the tool available to attract, you know, the investment. So time, so getting that timed up, um, is all a negotiate. It's an art. Some developers want the Urban Renewal Authority to finance public improvement debt upfront. For example, Everest, with that particular project, we issued about ninety one million dollars in bonds towards a one hundred million dollar commitment for environmental cleanup at the steel mill. And so that was the important part that we played in that program and that to get, so that hundred million dollars was really the, the thing that sealed the deal to keep our steel plant here. Those are not small decisions. And that's a lot of money, but that's money that otherwise would have, would be available for our other governing partners, including the city. But because of the need to retain our steel mill, all the different parties agreed to consent to having the TIF allocated to all of the total one hundred percent, including the bond redemption fund from School District sixty towards that project.
What's fifty acres that the plant sits on is now annexed.
Into the city, correct.
And that annexation was also a piece of why we could do what we did.
That was the quid pro quo for them to utilize urban renewal as a tool. For the first time, the main, a main portion of the steel mill plant came within the city limits.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. President Mark Aliff.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Pacheco. That's good information. I mean, everybody needs to know what's going to happen. And uh, that there's plans and things like that. But I'm kind of confused because I believe that a couple of weeks ago, there was a bunch of confusion on city council. About the four hundred thousand dollars to Sangre Cristo Art Center to buy property outside of a TIF district. Uh, can you fill us in on that process and how that happened?
We do a good job of solving other people's problems. And we're good. We can be a good partner. We partnered with Pueblo County and the school districts on surplus TIF proceeds for the, for the Vestas project. And that's how we were able to fund Dutch Clark improvements and some other things. We can get pretty creative. Um, we know that, uh, we're not done working downtown. And there was an opportunity that was brought to our attention of a willing seller at a discount in exchange for some improvements on the property associated with the art center. I, I don't want to go into the whole deal. But as part of our background work, we identified strategic sites that would be desirable for the Urban Renewal Authority to try to acquire to entice development. You know, that's, that's what we're trying to do. We've been working with private parties for several years now, trying to encourage downtown development, and we could not arrive. We, we couldn't, it was either the parking was a problem or the infrastructure was a problem or something, something was always the problem. We never we had out of town money dying to invest in our community downtown, and we could not find a piece of property. So that's part of what drove us internally when we're working on some of this, the opportunity presented itself. There was a way for us to park, because you got to remember, Pueblo County is one of the largest contributors to tax increment. And they have standing and they have a say. Um, you know, they could disagree with our entire urban renewal program and hold their TIF back off the table if they wanted to. We can't compel them to. So we have to have a cooperative relationship with all of our taxing partners. The library district, the county, city, every, you know, all of those taxing bodies. We got to work collectively because we have the same stakeholders. The people that pay taxes in the city, that pay taxes in our districts, pay taxes for the county and everything else. So we really do need to have this cooperative energy. It's not to say that Urban Oil has to do all of this. We're just providing some resources and some tools for the city and the decision makers to make. The, some of the other things, you know, specific economic development projects and strategies, the Urban Authority Board with the developer will need to work through some of those specific deals. That's, that's how we're set up. We work on the community's behalf. Used to be we were working just for the city's behalf, but now since two thousand and fifteen, we have to reach out and take all our other partners, um, questions and concerns into account now, which is a different environment.
So I guess I'm still confused.
With, uh, with, I, we can get you a copy.
When you're talking about surplus TIF. Is that what you, is that what you said? Is that what that four hundred thousand dollars is, is surplus?
It's, it's top property tax increment that's eligible to be spent as determined by the Urban Renewal Authority based upon the statutory guidelines. Okay, so we have existing debt for the parking garage downtown. As when you finance things like that, you have to have a coverage of usually about a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and thirty five percent of the debt service payment. So what happens to that thirty five? Okay, if we're, if we hit our target and and our, uh, tax increment revenue pays the a hundred percent of the debt service, but we still have to retain back thirty five percent. Once we get to a certain point where we feel comfortable that we have surplus capacity, that's when the board and our partners undertake, okay, what else could we do in that area to benefit that area?
But it's within the TIF.
It's in that TIF area.
Okay. So how do you spend the money outside that TIF area?
Well, we didn't on this case.
Oh, okay, I was.
We didn't.
Understand.
Because there was so much consternation over us trying to help the county and the art center that we figured out another way to do it, to comply with the strict the, to make sure it was an unambiguous arrangement with the art center and the county. Our conversations with the art center to this point is how can urban renewal help the art center become self-sustaining? How can we help the art center undertake expansion and renovation of their complex so that they have a revenue stream to wean them off the city and the county? And so that's how we've approached it. What could we do? Because we help developers all the time. And but, you know, we could apply those same tactics, skills, experience to helping our nonprofit partners become self-sustaining. So that was kind of what started this discussion about uh, urban renewal assisting with the art center because we've helped them since the beginning of the art center. It used to be a dump there.
So just to cut to the chase, where's the four hundred thousand gone?
The four hundred thousand dollars is going to go towards ADA improvements on the full, uh, art center redevelopment project.
And then they, how's it paid out? They submit.
Once they, every, it'll have to be certified to us. It'll be part of a much bigger proj, project, much bigger program. What I'm recommending to the art center and Pueblo County is an intergovernmental agreement to memorialize what's already happened and to set the stage for the community-wide process to evaluate and hopefully approve a plan for downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Council Joe Latina.
This has nothing to do with what you just talked about, other than to say, Jerry, thank you. Thank you for what you're trying to do in this community. What you've done on the east side in the, in the last five or six months has been unbelievable. And, and we're working to help those, those elderly women in that community with, which, which, which have been, they've been inundated with the homeless situation where they burned two houses. And then week and a half ago, I went over because I check on them all the time. Seventeen homeless people came out of the burned house. Then we had security there from, uh, that you provided for us. And so I, I, I want to thank you. And I want to thank you for, you know, taking the time today to help us with this, this, uh, grocery store proposal that we're, we're putting forth uh, with the other entity, with the other amenities that will come with that. That will be unbelievable for our community. So thank you. And your staff. Thank you. And your board.
Yeah, they're the ones that pulled the trigger.
Okay, anybody else in council? Any other questions? I think we're good, folks. Thank you for the presentation.
More to come. More to come. We're still doing the background. Thank you.
Okay, next up. Item Agenda C, Bessemer Safety Task Force. We have two, Betty Finley and Mona Klein presenting fifteen minute presentation.
Hello, all.
Hello.
I'm Betty. I'm, I'm not scared this time.
Hey guys, before we start, um, I just want to make sure that this is a very emotional issue for a lot of folks. But if we keep it within the quorum and respect each other, no throwing darts, none of that stuff, but let's just present and then leave here as happy friends. Thank you. Proceed, please.
So you want me to just read my article and then show my pictures?
We have fifteen minutes, so then we have to leave.
I had thirty minutes.
Questions and answers. Well, you're going to have fifteen question, minutes for questions and answers.
Okay. Well, we want our neighborhoods back because the homelesses are taking over their neighborhoods. And it ain't just my Bessemer area. I started the Bessemer area looking unto it. It's all over town, so each and everybody's district. I have talked to and got over six hundred people all over this town that are having problem with the homeless stealing, burning their fires, their garages, their sheds. Everywhere, folks, we need our city back. We know that these we know that many were bussed in here from Denver, and I have a picture of a bus. This is the buses that they come in. This is the buses that they come in. I have another one, but it's a video and I didn't know how to take that. Can you see that? These are the buses that they're shipping these people in, thanks to our governor.
Better turn it.
We know that there is many homelesses here.
The other way, because it's. There you go.
Sorry.
You're good.
We know that there is homelesses are from here, but they go and try to get help from the churches and the missions. I, I have talked to many of these and that's gotten help. The homeless that are causing the problems are the ones that are on the drugs. They are making our neighborhoods dangerous. We have lots of needles in our alleys, in our yards. They come and dump their trash. You can see all that. That's, that's trash from the homeless. Would you like that in your yard? Would you like that in your alley? Can you see those? Okay?
Yeah, you're good.
We don't like this. I try to clean it up. I'm seventy-three years old and it hurt me. But I will say one thing, I thank our mayor over here because she did come and help. We have empty houses on our block that has already caught on fire. If it wasn't for our neighbor, at three o'clock in the morning that was up, we could have lost our houses. We could have lost our homes. We could have lost the whole blocks. I've talked to many fire chiefs on this and they're scared that's gonna happen everywhere in our town. And one of the houses that I was working on is getting tore down. But you know what the sad part is? I had these in order. This gentleman that bought this property to take and tear this house down, he put a brand new fence up. Last Sunday, a guy was over there tearing it down. Thanks to me and two other my neighbors, we got all the fence back into his yard again. The two gentlemen that's in this picture here, they're my neighbors. They carried the stuff back. That's sad when this gentleman was trying to close the property up so he could tear the house down. It's sad. We lost our dollar store, Dollar General, which all the, a lot of senior citizens that don't drive. Walk there. Now we don't have that because the homeless were always breaking into it, stealing. Well, the last time around, they got in the back and tore it completely down and stole everything out of the store. Everything. The neighbors tried to call the police department. The police department couldn't come. And they were going out with buggies and buggies full of merchandise. Where they went, we don't know. There's a house two doors down from me and another one that I got solved and I'm taking credit for. This house here was a drug house. And with my determination and the things that I've got for proof that there was a drug house, I was able to get the people evicted. There was one, that little picture here shows that was just three days before they threw all this out. And I knew the homeless would be going through this, so I knew it had to be cleaned up immediately. When I called the mayor again, she had her crew, Mike, I'll say his name, Ron Pritudy. Putty. He had his group of people come out and clean this up. They would pick a bag up and it would be needles falling out of it. We can't have this stuff in our city, not in my neighborhood, not in your neighborhood, nobody's neighborhood. Because the entire town is tired of it. We have these wellness centers that's supposed to be given, they give out the needles to the, the, the bad people because they don't want the diseases. Guess who's gonna get the diseases? The people are because they're cleaning up the needles. Is that right? I don't think so. I don't think our regular citizens should be maybe pick up a needle or get poked by a needle and die. That's not right. Something has to be done. We need to send these homeless people that the governor has sent to us back to Denver. I have a list here. And I believe my citizens. There's been buses on Abriendo and Mesa. Guess what? That's one block from my house. One block from her business. King Super South Side, there's been buses. Santa Fe and McDonald's over there, um, the Blinn area. They're dropped off there. Uh, Lake and Northern, there's one gentleman, uh, sent me a message, said there was four buses there. And cars out there waiting for them. They were illegals. They were homeless. They were gangs. That's scary for our city. We need to do something for every district in our town, every district. Mineral, Mineral Park, they get drop off there quite often. They get dropped off at uh, Abriendo, oh, I write, Mesa. Uh, the fairgrounds they get dropped off at, then many buses at the fairgrounds. So how are we gonna solve this problem of the governors that stop sending these people here? We can, we need to help our Pueblo homeless people, not other city homeless people. And everybody that I've talked to all over this town agrees, we need to help our homeless people, our people, Pueblo people. Not, not Denver's people. How do we send these people back to the governor? I have ideas, but I'll get, I want to hear from you.
And I do think Betty's right, being a business owner in Bessemer for six years, we have seen the people that have been on the streets for six years. Now you have three, four new people every week. Where are they coming from? We have twelve oh five, which is, we're, we're twelve oh one, Gus's. Twelve oh three, we own that little house. Right next door to us is another drug house, trap house. It's a revolving door for the homeless in and out. There's people living in that backyard. There's a shack in the backyard. They're in and out of there. I see them urinate back there. I call code enforcement. Yes, Mike Purdy has come up in that alley and helped clean up the mess. But you know, we have, we have to deal with it. Gus's is an iconic bar. We don't want people not to want to come down there. You guys know, we have celebrations, birthdays. Celebrations for, you know, of life. Elderly, children. We don't need to have these homeless people. And they're shooting up right outside, in their vehicles. There's uh, pictures I've taken. Where I've seen him, where my customers have seen him. It gets frustrating. Where they're actually shooting up. This guy, yes, was in the car. Um, and I caught him with the needle in his arm. It's disgusting. My husband has to be out there cleaning constantly. I worry, my granddaughter can't even go in the backyard when she's there because of what she has to see next door. It's, it's just, it's disgusting. And we do have to do something about it. Um, Betty's right. I don't know, busting them in, but it, it just, I can't believe that there's new people down there at twelve oh five. Just the other day, Betty can confirm it. Twelve, either from twelve to fifteen year old girls coming out of that little house. Uh, later on that evening, I had explained to my husband about a little girl that was in that house. She was sitting out on the sidewalk, pretty much in front of Gus's with the bottle of Crown Royal. Twelve years old. What are they doing at that trap house? It worries me.
And she goes into, she gets dressed up real fancy and goes into a fancy little car. How are we gonna protect those young ladies? Maybe they've been kidnapped from Denver. We don't know, but I know they're not with their family. And I tried to ask them, let us help you, young lady. You don't want to waste your life. But you know, this is scary here. See these, these guys right here? Look real close at them. What does that look like to you? Can you see that? Isn't that kind of scary looking? Isn't that how the gangs are? We don't want them in our city. We all, everybody, every single one of us have got to find a way to bust these people back. We know they came from there. We know all these camps of these homeless people are not people from Pueblo. They are not. Why did they have to go clean up the area behind Dunkin' Donuts again? They had to tear that camp down. I've been everywhere in this town talking to people. Twenty-eighth Street, Twenty-Fifth Street. And all the, the signatures that I got, there's little notes underneath those names because of what people told me happened to them. So I would take little notes down every time I would get a signature. So as a group, as citizens, what are we going to do? How can we solve our problem to get our neighborhoods back, to get our city back? I mean, they're stealing kids' toys, their bicycles. They break into cars. They break into men's trucks. The tools are gone. This is their livelihood. This house that I just got shut down, that was a drug house. The landlord was over there today. And we sho- I showed him what we tried to do to stop people from going in there. He left for just a short time. They went in there, stole his ladder and tools. Just this afternoon. It's just insane. We have a house here, this guy's been trying to redo this apartment complex on Main, uh, Evans and Mesa. Look at all this trash. He has to leave a dumpster now out there. Cause they get inside this little thing here, the food's everywhere, mattresses everywhere. I only got, there was two mattresses there. I just didn't take both pictures. This is all within our blocks of her, her business and where I live. This one is a young lady, a single mother with two little kids scared to death because they're camped right behind her house. They use mattresses. But thanks goodness, Mike came over and tore him down so that little lady could relax a little bit. She come to my house at eight o'clock at night, Betty, I don't know what to do. They're making so much noise out there. This is a real sad one. This is not the exact one. But a handicapped lady, senior citizen in a wheelchair, they stole her ramp. How sad, that's over on the Twenty-Eighth Street. How sad that is. This is CDOT's uh, area. They, they uh, the homeless go in around these, these boxes here. They start fires. We just had another fire two weeks ago again. All this, they, they find wood and just take it in there and start their fires, smoke their pot, whatever they're doing. That's the back of Mr. V Hill. This is the front of Mr. B Hill. He has to take and chain his flowers down so the people don't take them. Because he lives, his house is in front of all this. I mean, this is in front of his house. So they break these fences down. They go inside there and do their thing. I couldn't get in there. It was so bad. It was so nasty.
Okay, Betty, let's, let's try to wrap this up in another minute, okay? And then we'll go open it up.
That's what I've got so far.
Are you ready for some question? You, you need something else? You good? Any counsel Latino?
Yes. Thank you both. Thank you both. Because we have the same problem in District Two on the east side. You go to the seven eleven over there, there's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five of them there every single day. And I go in there at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock. At night or twelve o'clock in the morning, because that's the kind of person I am. I'm a night owl. I got my days and nights mixed up. But anyway, they're there. Doing the same thing that they're doing in Bessemer.
Exactly.
And they're coming down in buses and it ain't the governor, it's the mayor of Denver.
Well, it's both. It's both. It's the governor and the mayor.
Betty, let, let, let Joe finish this.
Anyway, long and short, I put a call into the mayor of Denver's office. It's been two weeks ago. I haven't heard the secretary from, I left the message with the secretary. I haven't heard from the mayor or anybody else. And I'm, I'm trying to get a meeting set up with one of the council people. That I have connections with. Through the fact that I was up there thirty-five years doing my thing as an educator. But yeah, they're sending them here. And thank you for bringing the proof with the buses because yes, I've had the same thing.
I have another one, but it's on a video and I don't know how to, how to snap the shot, but it's a video of, it's over on Northern. It's about four blocks from my house.
Okay, Joe, you finished?
I had, I had, I had a businessman from this community call me today. About the same thing that you're, 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 you're both discussing here this evening. It has to stop.
It's gotta stop.
When they had that RV sho- uh, show, we had people come in to Gus's. And they said they would not come back because they were stealing. They were stealing their chairs and everything from their RVs at the RV park. What are we gonna do for the state fair? People come from the south, they exit McCully, they come down to Northern. Northern is disgusting.
I, I think there's programs that, there's programs, and I've done some research with that as well. That are in other parts of this country where they're taking, and in fact, in the northern part of the state, they're doing it in Well County. And I've spoken with the sheriff there. And I think it's maybe time for us to give strong consideration to that. Of bringing people in that can pass background clearance and training them and putting them on the street to help us is with the neighborhood patrol program, since we're short officers. And the other thing that we need to consider, instead of building a jail, a pr- a jail here. Need to buy the prison in, in Warfino County, which is twenty miles from here and, and use that facility. And the judge can get in the damn bus or in the truck and drive our car, whatever it is, and go down there and listen to the case. We need to get tough, folks. Thank you both.
The council didn't my street first.
Good evening, ladies. Thank you for coming. Um. I am the one who introduced the ordinance. That allows the mayor to clean up places like the jungle and the Walmart, behind the Walmarts and all public properties. And so before that, because there was a lot of scare, there was a lot of intimidation by, by putting uh, an ordinance out like that. Because the public says, oh, we can't criminalize homeless. But our city was in dire need. At that same time, I put out an ordinance for the um, bussie. So if the bus isn't registered with CDOT to have certain bus stops. Then if we call it in and they're off the stop, if the public calls that in, the police have to in, either go out or take a, take a report. So it's best to get a license and so forth. So what you need to understand is that's our role in council. We put out the ordinances. We put out the laws, the codes and things that gives the mayor the uh, authority to exercise all of the enforcement through her police department. We don't have a role in that.
Can I understand, can I ask you, I don't understand. You're, you're saying they can come, a bus can go anywhere in town and stop. And it's not a bus stop, but they could, it's legal for them to stop anywhere they want, let people out?
They have a route, routing um, that there's approved through the state CDOT. Now, I'm not saying that every stop that a bus is making, Ms. Finley, is on that where they're allowed to. I don't know. I don't know what their routing schedule is. But if you feel that a bus is outside of the routing schedule. And you take the information down, the police don't even have to come out at that time. They have the enforcement tool to, to follow up. Because there's a license number that's given. There's a, there's a usually a, a seat, probably a commercial um, license on that.
I have all that off the bus.
Okay, so that's my understanding is all we could do is follow the law.
Okay, but that paper you got there that shows where they were dropped off at, most of them were late at night or early morning where people were, maybe go to work.
Mm-hmm.
So a lot of people don't see these buses, but the ones that gave me these, that saw these, they were, most of them were going to work. That's how they saw.
That's what I'm saying is they take the information, they report it, the police don't, I don't know how, the enforcement side of it. All we could do is give the, the um, write the, write the ordinance and give it, approve it, give it to the mayor. And it's up to them to do the enforcement part of it.
As far as reinforcement?
The enforcement. That means the police department has the authority under the ordinance to go out there and see if they are authorized to stop.
Well, they're not gonna stay that long. They get, they drop them off.
Well, that's what I'm saying with the information, they can follow up with that at any time because if you're, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know. You're gonna have to talk. See, all we can do is provide the ordinance. The enforcement comes from the administrative side. So we've got two sides to our governance here. You have the legislative and you have the administrative side. And that's how that works. So I've provided us with an ordinance for illegal busing, okay? I've provided us with an ordinance to clean up public lands. We worked on, I didn't vote for the needle giving the Bessemer Wellness Clinic any money so that they can open there. We wrote a, um, we tried to ban needles and the courts came in and stopped us from doing that.
Can we go back and go, can we go back to that?
We could go back to um where it starts to, uh, it's state legislation, because that's where it starts.
Because the wellness center should be, they're helping the homeless, right?
I don't, I, I, I don't know what, they, because they made all kinds of claims. People come and make all kinds of claims. What they follow through with is beyond our control because it's unregulated um grants. When you have, when the city comes into place in the past, the grant funding has been, here you go. You know, we'll see you.
Do you think ten o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon is enough time for you to make a scheduled appointment so you could take a shower? That's what you have to do down there. That, that talk to the homeless. They have to make appointments.
But we're not in, we're not in there regulating them. We don't have any authority. Like if you had a business, would you want us, the government and your business telling you what you could do and not do?
We're paying tax money to this company.
That was a granted, that was a grant and that was, that was, I'm just telling you, this is how it works. And I know you're not gonna like, I don't like it. You think I like it?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't like needles.
We gotta do something.
I don't like drug addicts. I don't like children being exploited. Children being exploited because of drugs and gangs and it's, it is, it's sickening. You know, when I, when a twenty-two year uh, uh sex offender was released early, so twenty-two years you get released, I mean, it's gotta be bad, right? Violent sex offender moves in behind me. Guess what I could do? Nothing. I can't go and post a sign that he lives back there. That's, he's got rights. Do you think I like that? I don't. But that's the one thing that we have to be careful of. Because the law protects a lot of these people and who gets in trouble? The good people.
The good people, right.
You know, and so we have put ordinances in place that gives us the tools to do as many things as, as we can. And unfortunately, today's society isn't like it was even ten years ago.
And they, even I drive by that wellness center. How much did that cost? We know what, what that cost. And where are they? Sitting in front, right down the street on Northern. Where's the rooftop garden they were supposed to have? Uh, the kitchen they were supposed to have to teach the homeless to cook for themselves.
And they don't.
They go in dirty, they come out dirty. So they're not showering.
And that's why I didn't vote for it, because it wasn't a plan. There was no, there wasn't, there was nothing that said.
Oh, they have a plan.
There was nothing that said, hey, this is what we're doing and there weren't any, there weren't any conditions on that, okay? So I didn't vote for it.
Do you, do you know how nice that, that building is on the inside?
It's probably very nice.
Let people sit on that furniture. It's sad.
But, but, but what we can't do is we can't organize groups within our neighborhoods. Now, the only way that we're gonna keep peace and be is to, is to go through the neighborhood um watch program that's set up and monitored by the police department. That way you, you make sure you're within the guidelines so you don't get in trouble.
But you know what?
I go, I go back to the Trayvon Martin killing of a young man who was part of the condo community that got killed because a group of citizens decide that they were gonna monitor their own HOA, okay? And what a travesty. And that's the things that happen when you energize that type of you know, group and organization. So uh, yes, you wanna be loud, you be the person that calls down and complains all the time. And you be careful because you don't all of a sudden wanna be targeted because sometimes those groups are bigger than you. And, and, and.
I have.
Yeah, exactly. And you, and you should, and unfortunately, we should all just be living at peace and we should be living in a peaceful society and we're not. But we just have to be careful. Um, and.
But this is not right.
But it's unfair that, you know.
We're living in.
I might have a kid that comes in and I said, no, you cannot have no water. There's, I don't give anything free to anybody. Loaf and Jug doesn't, um, Circle K doesn't, so why should I?
Yeah.
And at that moment, he turns around and grabs half of my paper towels. Now I have to throw the whole roll away because he's filthy. It's unfair. That some of them are violent when you ask them to leave, get off your property. Right in front of us. And I do own the house next to us. It's my personal, private house. Do you know how many times I have to come out and ask them to leave? And do you know what I get told? That's not right. That's my property. I pay the taxes there. I should not have to deal with that.
It, it's, 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 it's unfortunate. And like I said, we're putting ordinances that make, give us uh legal uh avenues to take care of things. Um, and, and so we're not against you in any way, shape or form. We're with you guys because we come up with ordinances. We've just advanced the loitering ordinance and so forth. We came up with, yeah, we try to come up with as much as we can to weaponize our, weaponize ourselves, weaponize you because there are laws.
Are these, these ordinances being followed? I mean, for our, for our area over there on Northern? The lottery, lottery and all that kind of stuff, aren't those for the whole city?
They should be for the whole city.
I mean, the business owners over there are scared to leave their businesses anymore because they get broke in every other day.
Yes.
Let me interject for you a little quick before we run out of time. Um, the, the revelations here, they've been brought before. I've brought them here, counsel, many times. I've brought pictures. I've brought the same testimony that you're giving now, I've done in the past, so have a lot of these counselors. So these are not new revelations that we're hitting with. I am impressed with the fact, the number of positions you got and the people that you've been able to come. It's very, very impressive what you guys got. And that's why it really is, it's hurting. I can tell it's hurting your, you and, and your group. It's hurting the people that live there. I live on the corner of Ormond and Mesa. I'm right there. I know exactly what you're talking about. But when we start doing things like we have a picture of a bus, now I know there's excursions that go to Mexico. And I can't tell you what that bus is. I can't, and I'm not gonna sit here and, and challenge you. Let me finish. I'm not gonna challenge you in reference to what proof you have or don't have or what evidence. Right now, I'm not convinced it's there. But I am gonna tell you that the testimony that you're giving is some testimony we've all heard before. We also have to look at the fact that we have a police department that's down in staff. They can't do the react, the proactive stuff they'd love to do. They're on the end of, this is all reactive and we're not the only city going through this. I'm not making excuses. I'm just trying to put, paint a fair picture, okay? We hear you and we're doing the best we can, but we can't make things up. We can't presume. We can't make inferences. We gotta be very careful what we do because this is very, very serious. And I do appreciate you guys coming forward, but before we close, I'll let Counselor Flores finish up.
I, I just wanted to say that uh there is a department within the county called the Department of Human Services. And if you have knowledge or aware of, of a child, I think you mentioned a twelve-year-old child that uh I would hope that you would call them.
I got that number last night. A, a gentleman came to my house last night and gave me that information.
Right. I, I think all of us have an obligation when we see child abuse or neglect. And that certainly is, or a child that, I mean, a child at twelve being homeless and having no support system. I mean, we, we, we pay these people in the county.
Well, they're being trafficked. Well, exactly. I don't know if you guys uh are on Facebook, the Pablo Douchebag's place. There was a, a, a mother looking for her fourteen-year-old daughter because she was on the streets doing fentanyl.
The other thing is that the same department also has a separate phone number dealing with the abuse of older adults or, or anyone that has a disability. So I mean, there, there might be two additional resources there that especially with the example you used of the twelve-year-old. And uh it sounds to me that a lot of, a lot of adults in that area just by losing their freedom of going outside to their backyards or doing all of that uh that you should see, uh you should call this number and find out what it is they can do. Because a lot of those elderly ladies or men.
I just got that last night. A gentleman came over and talked to me. Um, you know, there's been a few people that's already been on Channel Five News that are having the same problems. And they're, they're getting the news out to all over the, all over. I'm doing the same thing. There, my, I'm on, I'm on Channel thirteen talking about our problems because we need our city back. We want our city back.
Think we all do, yeah. And thank you for this report. It's really eye-opening.
We're gonna wrap it up with Counselor Maestri.
Um, just to reinforce, um, counsel, what uh Counselor Menfullers has to say about those services I myself have experienced, took a baby that lived in the river bottom for eighteen months. And when I saw him in the group of, at that time, active drug users in the front of the Jack in the Box on the north side, it took me about six weeks to track him down again. Because I didn't know what to do the first time. I mean, it's like, what do you do? And I, I, you know, you got, you're frozen. Like, oh my gosh. Well, he now lives with his biological brothers and sisters, five of them that were adopted previously before he was even born to a family in Colorado Springs. But you know, the, they gave the mother every opportunity to, you know, they finally, when I saw him again and they came and took him into custody, they put him in directly in, in, into the fostering with the family of his siblings. You know.
Can I ask, can I ask one question, please? If these people are being bused in, and I'm gonna tell you the one that I got a picture of, I said something to that bus driver. I said, why? This is not even a bus stop. And he looked at me kinda weird. I said, this corner is not a bus stop and it's not a bus stop. If we, if they can ship them here, why can't we ship them back? Oh, it's money? Guess what? I can guarantee you, I could ask one dollar from every citizen in this town and I can guarantee we have more than a dozen buses to get them out of here. That's how bad the people are sick of it. They're tired of their, their, their business is going downhill. They're tired of their children losing their toys. They're tired of their cars being broken.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, what if we, what if everybody decided they wanted to get rid of the elderly and bust them out of here? Do you see what I mean?
I'm not talking about the elderly.
No, no, what I'm saying, Betty, is it's the same thing. They have the same rights that the elderly do in order to live in this city. Now.
But like Regina, this house on twelve oh five, is it a section eight house? Because if it's a section eight house, all these people should not be living in that house on the property.
They call section eight. They have their own inner turn, internal.
Do we get a hold of section eight to find out if that's a section eight?
Twenty-five minutes. I'm only giving the poor mayor twenty minutes. So I'm letting you guys know, you've had, you've had enough time. You have to wrap it up in the last couple of seconds. Please, your closing remarks, please.
How about me?
We just wanna get our, our neighborhoods back. We wanna get our city back. There's got to be a way to get this done.
And stop all the drug use. The drug, that's, they're, they're just allowed to do their drugs anywhere on the streets. People go to the, picket, Nunez down the street. Gazalianos, they're shooting up right in the middle of the street in between their toes.
And they don't get one or two needles. They get any up to a hundred at a time. They have bags full. I've sat there and watched it for two hours. They're not getting two needles.
We're gonna wrap this up. I thank you for your testimony. It's been lively and it's been emotional. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez. I, I want, I want something to say. I think I have a right to say something.
You do?
I have a right to say something.
So they're gonna talk to budget impacts, Heather Graham, but one at a time, twenty minute presentation. Thank you guys very much.
This town needs to come into the twenty-first century. And we need to get together as a community. We need to get together as a community. Find me if you have to. We need to get together as a community. We need to sit down and we need, we need to say, this is what we want.
Exactly.
Okay?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Put a committee together. Let's get the mayor's office involved and let's get this thing going.
Okay. Next up, please, Budget Impacts, Mayor Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We have a slide deck that Clyde is pulling up and you have it in front of you um as well. So this is a pretty in-depth uh thorough presentation tonight. We have talked about laying off our temporary employees or laying off employees, period. But as I had stated previously in budget presentations, um per the three CBAs, all temporary employees would have to be laid off. So this is the breakdown of the municipal code where it talks about um layoffs in order of reduction from part-time probationary and permanent. So our part-time wages for our part-time employees in 2024 were roughly three point three million dollars. Um, as of six thirty of 2024, we had four hundred and twenty-seven temporary and seasonal staff. And by the end of the year, we had two hundred and twenty-nine. As of today, currently in the city of Pueblo, we have four hundred and sixty-two temporary staff. So these are the, I'm gonna show you the three different collective bargaining agreements uh between general services, um fire and PD. And where it states in each of their uh CBAs how layoffs would potentially have to happen. So when employees are laid off, the employees in the department and class affected shall be laid off in the following order. And as you can see, it's unclassified, part-time or temporary, probationary and then permanent. And it's relatively the same for all of our three bargaining units. So that was Paige. This is police and this is fire. So I went through each of the departments and talked to the directors to see what it would look like if we had to go through with part-time layoffs. Uh, in municipal court, we currently have six part-time staff members, which is about one-third of their total staff. Some of the staff members in there are our probation's division, our courtroom security and our community service uh programs that does a lot of the cleanup that the two ladies before were talking about. The purchasing department, um which has three-time part-time employees that um uh do very important processes for the city. So we have a courier, we have the warehouse clerk and we have an administrative support person. The HR department, um they have one part-time employee. Um, it assists with the coverage of the front desk to greet visitors, responsible for a significant amount of data entry and scanning new employees' data and changes uh throughout the year. So this is another really important uh position that's in the HR department. The uh, uh last couple of departments are the real large departments within the city of Pueblo that use a lot of part-time employees. So this is the Pueblo Police Department. You can see that we have forty part-time employees. Um, without these employees, the, the police department could essentially haul, especially with our uh severe problem we have right now with hiring um officers in retention and recruitment. So they have twelve part-time employees that help um throughout the dispatch center. Um, eight part-time employees across uh these units. So we have one part-time and cold case, um two part-time and clerk and CSI. Three part-time employees in the patrol division. Um, you can see they're listed. I won't go through and read them off. But we have one in the abandoned vehicle clerk and traffic unit, a parking enforcer and one clerk in the patrol division. And they do various uh jobs throughout the day. Uh, more Pueblo part-time employees. So uh we have four part-time employees in property and evidence. Four part-time employees in the records divisions with help, that helps with all the citizen reports. And another big um division, I'm not sure counsel is aware of, but the code enforcement employees are all. But the code enforcement employees are all, uh, not, uh, part-time employees. So nine individuals who do all the abatements within the city. Parks and Recs. So this is the largest, uh, part-time employee department. Because you know, this is where a lot of the quality of life, um, services come from, from our community. So we have 389 part-time employees. You can see their 2024 wages and benefits were a little over $2 million. Um, but they were able to bring in $896,000 with revenue with those part-time employees. You can see that we have our temporary, um, office employees, um, seasonal park maintenance employees. So they're responsible for the caretaking of our 81 parks within the city of Pueblo. We have irrigation specialists, um, inspection specialists. They pick up trash. They deal with the streetscapes. Um, lots of park issues. These are our volunteer coordinators. So, um, you'll see a lot of these volunteer, uh, part-time and seasonal employees. Like at El Centro, um, helping with children's programs. Our park rangers are part-time employees. Um, so they would be cut. We have nine temporary and seasonal part-time, um, employees. Or the parks department that help, um, with security, uh, and patrol. So that would be a huge, huge detriment to the, um, park rangers. They also have full-time, three full-time employees. 22 temporary and seasonal horticultural employees. So, um, they do all the beautiful streetscapes, um, within the city. Um, maintain all of the, um, grass and flowers. So if we were to eliminate these part-time positions, we'd probably have to eliminate our streetscapes. So we wouldn't have anybody to take care of those. Our pools, um, so we have 106 temporary employees, um, between the four pools in the city of Pueblo. Um, so without these part-time employees, we would have no lifeguards, swimming structures, pool cashiers. Um, we would have to close all of the swimming pools within the city because we would not be able to man those. Um, I spoke about El Centro a minute ago. So these are also additional, um, employees that are at El Centro. That help, um, with programming throughout the summer and throughout the school year. See, city park rides. I know that this is one that we've talked about. Uh, before, we would have to close down the city park rides because those are all, uh, temporary employees, um, as well. And all of our, um, youth sports programs that we run within the city, we would no longer be able to do. Um, because all of these, all of these employees are part-time employees. Adult sports, uh, movies in the park and books in the park would also be, um, cut. Because part-time employees also man, um, all of these events that we have throughout the summer. Can see the different wages and the amounts of employees that I have listed there in the yellow. And then our last department that utilizes, um, our 10 employees is the Public Works Department. They have about 10 part-time employees. Um, constructions inspectors, associate engineers, maintenance workers and our recycle works, um, out on Stockard Road. Those are all part-time employees as well. Um, so as you can see, you could see their hourly wage, what the city is. Currently paying for some of these, uh, positions throughout the year. Really depends on if, uh, we're paving or what kind of projects we have. Um, going on in the city is really how we determine how many part-time public works employees we have. And that will conclude the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, is there a number that we're trying to pay for our budget? This, this is all affected January 1, I'm assuming, at next year's budget.
This is just a recap counselor of, um, we had talked, we've talked on council and last year's budget about potentially laying off employees. Um, you can't lay off full-time employees without getting rid of the city's entire part-time staff. And so I wanted to show what quality of life aspects would be affected. Um, if the city had to do that across how many departments, what would the effect be on those departments? So the numbers I gave you are a reflection of the budget from 2024. It's probably a little bit higher for 2025 and I would assume it would be higher for 2026, um, as part-time, um, wages increase.
This is, this is really valuable because what you're doing here is you're sequencing where we'd have to start and, and kind of move up. Uh, and, and basically there's certain areas that we can't even consider cutting.
There are, there are certain areas, but per the three CBAs, if you start cutting, um. One specific class, you have to cut that entire class throughout the city. So you would essentially be eliminating all part-time help from every single department throughout the city.
Right. And the, the only other thing is that as long as I've been on council. There's always a certain amount of employee positions that are never filled. Whether, we know it's in the police department now, which is probably the most significant. But we have anywhere during my terms, um, anywhere between 75 to maybe 100. Positions that we don't fill, but it, they are taken into consideration when we do our budget. So there's a savings there and it seems that we, you know, and it's obviously if we could fill them all every year. We don't want to mess with that and it would be nice if we could, but we know historically that never happens. Uh, even if we cut that in half, let's assume we have 100 positions. And to be extra cautious, we just say 50 positions are safe. Uh, and, uh, we, why not think about using money that we don't, we know we're not going to use? Uh, because we can't fill the positions in order to, uh, provide equilibrium here between having to lay people off.
So those positions are included, um, in these part-time positions, the hundred or so positions that you're talking about. So I could tell you probably 60, a little over 60 right now are police officers. So there's about 40 open positions. Um, within the city that if it's a position that we don't have to fill, we have it on a freeze right now. We're not currently filling it, but that's, that's outside of all part-time employees.
Right. And then I, I want to remind everybody that, uh, during the discussion with the nonprofits last year. Uh, I did go back 17 years and our, our surplus in the city is probably, um. I don't know, over those 17 years, uh, we literally didn't, during the recession, we didn't have any surplus. It was zero in most cases. Um, but there's never been, there's been three years that have been. Uh, the highest surpluses that we've had as the city in the last 17 years. I didn't go beyond that. So, and tho- those numbers are 21 million, 23 million and 26 million. Those are the highest surpluses this city's ever had. And when you look at that, you're saying, well, why not use surplus? The other 14 years, literally, they didn't have any surplus. A, a lot of times we had half of the surplus we should have. Sometimes it was three quarters. But in, but in 24, uh, we had the, the third largest surplus we've ever had. And so I, I, I think we need to balance, uh, maybe a fear that we're going to be laying people off. When in fact, I, I still can't see, uh, it's been done for the last, you know, for 14 of the 17 years I analyzed. Uh, that, uh, doesn't even come close to the surplus that we have now. And, and if we have to use part of that, we use part of that. I mean, that's, you know, the, the, especially with the lack of police officers, uh, that we have. Uh, I think we need to look at that too, but that's down the line. I know we're going to be, this is a long process here. But I just wanted to say that upfront. Thank you.
That's the Maestri.
So, am I hearing that correctly? Because what you, you, you move, you move, uh, officers on the payroll to that, uh, tax money, correct? So you're, you're paying them out of the.
24 of them are paid.
Out of there. Okay. But in reality, it's not like there's a savings at the end of the year. Because you're not hiring a full force. You're reallocating some of those funds towards things that, you know, um, you know.
Different projects.
Different projects within the.
Salary saving. Mm-hmm. Sure. So, and that's, that's how, uh, the police department currently has, um, a lot of their weapons paid for, a lot of the technology. So if you think that we have, you know, about 60 open positions and they stay open throughout the year, that's about $6 million with French. Um, so if we didn't have the open positions that we've had over the last several years. We would not have money to pull from our reserves, um, every year to balance the budget.
We would be, otherwise we'd have to increase the budget, the operating expense for the police department, correct?
And we did. You increased it, um, last year. I've, I think I sent you all, um. What I've asked the departments to come and present, uh, to me now is a 15% decrease in operating budgets. I've also asked the non-departmentals, the city is still going to fund in 2026 to also take a 15% cut. Um, and their non-departmental funding, the five or six that the city has contractual agreements with. So I think that'll roughly save the city about $2.5 million, um, a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but like I said previously, um, we were at an 8.6% loss in, for this year. Um, sales tax was down 6.6%, so that's about a million dollars that were down. And we have about four to $5 million, depending on what happens with pages increase in additional wages. So I think that we could potentially be looking anywhere from 11 to 13 million dollars in a deficit for 2020. Six is budget if we don't find another revenue source, if we don't increase tax, um. Tax something that we're not taxing, bring back the street utility fare fee, excuse me. We are going to probably have a $13 million, um, loss to our reserves. You have about $19 million in there right now. So, um, although it doesn't seem very pressing for 2026, for 2027, it will be very pressing.
You know, I recently, uh, was going through previous videos, um, in research for some other things. And, uh, and this is just an example. Um, because we never really heard it when we were on council until this moment. And that's when we were looking for a retention bonus and, um, some increase in police salaries. And this has, like I said, it has nothing to do with the police department. It's what we experienced in general. Was when Alexandria Romero came and that was the first time they ever talked about the threat.
How much trouble we were in.
Yeah, how much trouble we were in. And, um, yeah, I just saw that. I just reviewed that like last week or something. How much trouble we were in and how much, uh, if we kept going at this rate. That we, in 2027, everything would be depleted.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we haven't had years since then that we've actually increased any type of revenue coming in. So we're kind of in that hole right now.
That's correct.
I think that, you know, the question came about, about layoffs and so forth. Is because we have to understand, and I think maybe you should present this too during your budget talks. Uh, of if we're, if we're into so much in salaries. Well, what does that leave us for everybody to, you know, do we have the ability to do the, you know? Have the tools, have the money to get everybody out there and clean and pick up and run the rides. You know, the, the operating expenses.
Right.
Yeah. Is there anything left to operate on? Because otherwise, why would we have all these employees if we're not actually operational? Every, then that's every department across the board. And I, so I think that's a, a way to get the community to understand. The need for the revenue and why we, uh, why we're having these discussions. And what we're going to be facing here in this, uh, budget for 2026. And that's all. Thank you.
Counselor, anything else?
President.
Yeah. Hey, thank you for this information. This is good information. In the budget, in the budget, where are the part-time employees?
They're within each department's operational costs.
So they're in.
Under wages.
Okay.
Under wages, excuse me.
Well, I think it's very important. I mean, just for clarification, uh, that the city council can't lay off anybody. City council can't fire anybody. So I assume that this is just information for us. So we know the difficult decisions you're going to have to make when it comes to the budget process. The other thing is that I hope, and what I'd like to see is the city attorney's office really delving into this. And telling us what are our options as a city when moving forward on this? Is it time to go back to the community, not for a tax increase, but into relooking at the, the, uh, bargaining agreements and things like that? I mean, there's, I know this is a multifaceted problem. That, that cannot necessarily be fixed by one specific thing. Uh, obviously if 500 businesses came to town over the next six months, uh, and, and, uh. Sales tax skyrocketed, we would not be having any of these conversations. Uh, so, I mean, I'm just suggesting that as we move forward to, to maybe, uh. The attorney's office looks into it a little further and tells us what, what options there are. Especially as we come upon August or September and where we need to head. But thank you for the information. That's eye-opening.
Okay. Anything else from council? Any other comments? Mayor, anything else? You good?
All good.
Okay. We're going to adjourn and we'll be back here at 7:10.